All right, I would like to call the July 10th work session for the White County Board of Education to order. Appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate staff being here on you guys' summer's afternoon. So we will go through our for tonight's meeting. We will a few policies that be coming through for second reading this evening. Some of those are June recommendations from TSBA. Covered legislative updates that passed the last legislative session. And then we have a couple of other items policies for coming up on second reading. So as board members think to review these policies. So start with our agenda and is there any, any items, any corrections that need to be made for our, excuse me, not agenda, or meeting, board meeting minutes from, and work session meeting minutes from last month? Okay, if not, we'll, we'll move on to budget amendments and transfers. We have budget amendments that we need to consider tonight. Some Perkins Grant monies and also yeah, both of those related to Perkins Grants. Mr. D, would you like to just update us on that?
Sorry about that. We were checking on the audio. We have a couple of budget amendments for you. One is CTE Perkins Basic Grant in the amount of eighty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars. And then there is the Perkins Reserve Grant, which is an additional grant we apply for each year. We are successful in getting again, thanks to the work of Mr. Lane Ward and his staff, another fifty thousand dollars of income for our CTE programs. And those are the budget amendments for July.
So these are new monies that came in that were outside of our budget that we passed last month?
They are. We, we expect to receive those each year. We can't guarantee the Perkins Reserve. We don't get that every year, but we get it most years, but they were expected and received.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question on that. So with those expected monies, we, we budgeted that money in, in with that. And with this grant coming in, that will lower our budget number that we were over budget as of right now, right?
Yeah, so these are, this is a good example of how we overestimate our expenditures and underestimate our revenues. And then the revenues come in and we're able to supplement some of those expenditures. So you can see there's, there's salaries in here for, for some sal-, uh, excuse me, some monies in there for salaries, for substitutes, for software and many other things. So it'll take the pressure off of the, it's a scheduled budget, the approved budget, and provide some extra funding at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments regarding the budget amendments? And like, like you said, thanks to all those who are working diligently writing grants to help find this supplemental income. All right, then next we'll get into policy. And as, as I mentioned, there were several policies that coming up for, for second reading tonight. Those were TSBA, TSBA recommendations, as I mentioned, based on legislation that, that passed. Maybe also some other cleanups. So we can, we can address these however you would, you'd like. We can take, go through and look at each one and see if there's any questions or comments on each of those. If you have specific policies that you want to, you'd like to look at, we can do that as well. So if you guys just give me some guidance on that, then we'll.
Mr. Chair, are you talking about the June policy updates that were a separate folder?
Yes, sir. The ones that were, it's zero C, zero six CI, the June policy updates.
I did have one question on, and it may be jumping around a little bit, but there was, there was one I was looking at. The Interscholastic Athletics forty-three oh one, down in the virtual schools, you know, we're talking about all the stuff that's highlighted. Virtual school students, if I'm not mistaken, have to play sports. If they're, they have to play in the county that they're designed for, if I'm reading that correctly. So do we have students in White County now who are a virtual school student who could play middle school or high school athletic, interscholastic athletics?
I don't think so. To my knowledge, I don't think we have any virtual school. Well, I take that back. We could have some Penn Foster students that would consider virtual school students that are, but I think they're technically considered homeschool. So this is a little different in the sense that virtual, you could be attending a school in.
West Tennessee.
West Tennessee, right, and then be in our jurisdiction for athletics. So this, I think, is just differentiating then between the above paragraph, which was homeschool students and actual virtual school students.
Okay, that was, that answered my question. Thank you.
So, good question, Mr. McDonald, and appreciate you bringing that up. Let's, let's just, let's try to do this. I think we, we should have enough time to go through this. So I'm going to start the top fourteen oh seven, School District Records. Is there any questions or comments on that policy? This is not a new policy. It's an updated policy. Did notice there, and Mr. D, if you could clarify, one of the changes there is designated the, mentions the School Board Secretary. We rely a lot on the Central Office to help us with those, with those responsibilities. Could you just share with us how that's been handled right now?
So we are super thankful to have Ms. Kim Sims here and taking our notes tonight. And she does a lot of things for us behind the scenes and helps us out quite a bit. Technically with the Tennessee School Boards Association, Linda Alley is listed as the School Board Secretary. And that just comes down to when legally things come through that have to be filed, someone's name is on there. And so that, Ms. Alley's name was on those things before Ms. Sims joined us, and so we've just left it that way. But in this case, as it pertains to student records or district records, the process is, is that someone would notify our office, then the Director of Schools. And I don't always physically pull those records. I'll go to Ms. Alley and she'll head, she'll head that up and she'll get other folks to help. And then I submit those records or will remit those records as requested. So that's really the issue there is just marking who is who in that process. So the requests come to the Office of the Director of Schools, but I have other folks to designate, in this case, the Board Secretary that helps gather those records for me.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments on fourteen oh seven? The next, next two policies regarding charter schools nineteen oh one, nineteen oh three. The updates on that, as I saw, were regarding the reporting responsibilities. And then also on the monitoring side, if there was charter school in, in our district, that the Board would have some monitoring and reporting oversight on, on those, those, on a charter school. We don't have that now, but we do have policy in place and it's compliant in the event that did happen.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but charter schools have to be approved by this Board before they can be deemed a charter school in our district?
That is almost correct. There is, there is a charter organization at the state level that can supersede the Board in some cases. But in most normal cases, if, if procedures are followed, that the school, the local school Board approves those.
On most cases, the State Board doesn't want to do anything. They want the local Board to do it all, if I'm not mistaken there.
That's correct. But there is a charter school committee that, that can override a local Board if they feel the process has not been followed accordingly.
Okay, any other questions on nineteen oh one, nineteen oh three? Okay, then moving to twenty-four oh three, surplus property sales. This provides, this is specifically for equipment items purchased with federal, federal dollars. And up for where there's no further obligation on the, on the district to, for reporting or, or sharing of proceeds. From, I think it's five thousand dollars up to ten thousand dollars. Questions on that? We'll move on to the next one, twenty-eight oh four. The quest for reimbursements that extend that another thirty days. So anyone requesting reimbursement for, for expenses has an additional thirty days to, to get that in.
I do want to say something right there, and I think it's good to note that this office and Chad's office has always been, if you've ever noticed, anytime you submit something as a reimbursement, it's a very, very quick turnaround. And I just want to, you know, say thank you to Chad and, and whoever here in this office that does it. If it's you, Ms. Sims, or Ms. Alley, or whoever it is. But super smooth, I would like to see us think about going to a per diem where it's, you know, it's figured the mileage from where, from this office or whatever and, and paid straight out. There's other school districts that do it and they, they really like the fact that they don't have to keep up with receipts. They just, you know, it's paid whatever they're going to be. So that might be something that might want to be thought about in the near future or, you know, and whatever's coming up. So maybe Chad, you might can give us some ideas on that.
Just hold it for a second and it'll come up?
Yes, thank you. That, that's actually in place starting July one was the per diems on that. So, so we'll have that, a new travel policy with per diems and stuff like that, so you don't have to keep.
So that, so you don't have to keep up a receipt, you won't have to keep a receipt anymore in it. Did, did the monies change any at all? I mean.
Yes, it did.
Because we were way, way, way behind the state averages on, on travel and all that.
Yes, it's a percentage of, of the, it's not the full amount that the state is, but it was a percentage. So we're kind of, we're, we're more than we were, not quite like the state, but it is the same per diem stuff, so.
That's a, that's good to know. Thank you.
All right, moving along, we had update to policy thirty-two oh two, this emergency preparedness plan. Spoke about that, about some of the changes regarding the file safety, fire safety drills. Any questions on thirty-two oh two? All right, then we'll move on to thirty-two oh four. Was a section regarding threat assessment team as far as reporting. So that was the update there, so for emergency preparedness and, and reports, providing information on credible threats and things of that nature. Those, we have a policy in place now of how we report those if, if those are being requested. Couple other things pertaining to that. Questions on thirty-two oh four? Okay, then forty-one hundred, that's instructional programs. Basically have added a statement in their introductory statement in general, just talking about the Board is not discriminatory based on several factors. And that was specifically, I think, coming out of legislation, making sure that we included anti-sent, anti-sentimentism as part of that, our nondiscriminatory policy. Any questions on forty-one oh, forty-one hundred? Okay, then if I'm not mistaken, forty-two twelve, that would be a new policy for virtual education. Confirm that, Mr. D?
Yes, so there is now allowance for the School Board, for the schools to have virtual education days. And so we had to have a policy on virtual education program and what that looks like. So we'll actually work, it will be, I am working with our technology department, will be put forth, and our schools and our principals to have a plan in the event that we need to use it for maybe an inclement weather day instead of using a snow day per se. So we have the option to use some days for that and work on a plan to, with our teacher, with the other principals. And then teachers will have to be prepared for what that'll actually look like for a virtual day for students to log in. Because not all of our students have Chromebooks. They do from eighth grade through twelfth. But we'll come up with what virtual programming looks like for our K-seven students. And then we'll be able to utilize those days in the event that we need them for, for weather purposes.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions on our new virtual education policy? Thank you for that clarification. Any questions on our new virtual education policy? As, Mr. D, virtual school student participation in, in T double S double A, or T M S double A athletic programs. Any questions on the updates to policy forty three oh one? All right, then we'll move, policy forty four oh three. Out, out our library collection, that materials shall not be removed on the sole grounds, said it isn't a religious item. Any questions, comments on, on that policy? Okay, then, excuse me, forty four oh six. Use of the internet, the school internet, there is some internet safety measures, couple lines have been included there. Talking about access to, to internet that's age appropriate, so that we limit that access to items that are age appropriate. And then also for safety and protection and security of students when using internet, electronic mail, chat rooms, and things of that, that nature. And then preventing students from accessing applications that don't protect students from disclosure, use of disseminating their personal information. So, some things there on regarding students and use of the internets. And then language in there to prohibiting students from accessing social media platforms over the district's website, except where authorized by the teachers. And then also have some, some language in there regarding district staff and with, who has presence on social media networking websites. And so, covers some updates there covering both students and staff. Any questions on updates to policy forty four oh six?
How closely monitored is our district staff as far as their presence during the workday on social media?
Are you asking about our staff?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just, I'm not saying monitored, and I, and I probably should have used a better choice of words. But, um, I guess, you know, TikTok and Instagram and Facebook and all that stuff. If folks are posting on that during the workday, I mean, where, who, who sees that? And when does that get brought to the attention that they're doing that during instruction time?
Well, it's not, I don't know if it's monitored by the district per se, but we do get reports of that. It's punishable, you know, it's by, you know, by whatever means, you know, necessary. They shouldn't be doing that. It's, it's in policy that they shouldn't be on, and certainly shouldn't be posting by the day. I received a notification of that last year, so I'd encourage the public to let us know when that's happening, and then we will address it accordingly. But I've been clear to our, as we look at the more stringent rules for cell phones and devices for our students, I've been telling our principals, and I will tell them again next week at our principals' meeting, that that goes for our instructors during, our faculty and staff during instruction time as well. So, they can utilize those for instructional purposes, but they should not during instruction time be on their phones. And if it's what we're gonna ask of our students, we need to certainly be modeling that as, as educators as well.
Kinda where I was going with that, you know, we're asking our students to adhere to a policy, and I would hope that our, our staff and our instructors and our administrators from top to bottom would adhere to that as well. So, thank you for that.
Right, any other questions on forty four oh six? All right, then we'll move on to forty six oh one, that's reporting student progress. So, what's up, we're doing away with the four and a half week progress report and going to once every nine weeks, correct?
Well, this just requires that once every quarter that we include the most recent screener, that universal screening report and dyslexia screener, if it's, if it's applicable during that time for students is being added to their progress report. So, we have to provide that, that, that update as well with their progress report, at least once per quarter.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, this policy, the old policy actually had progress reports provided every four and a half weeks.
Yes, you're correct. This one says that at least every nine weeks. So, we can do it more than that, but this, the, the new wording in the legislation requires at least once a quarter. We can do it more, which we, we do.
All right, any questions on forty six oh one? Then, next on fifty one hundred, personnel goals, board's personnel goals. We dropped one, and, uh, will speak to that?
Uh, no, not really. I, I wanted, I wouldn't, to my recollection, I think it had some sort of D E I reference, and so it was, that was taken away. So, that was reduced to, this is what it was prior to, well, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. All right, questions on fifty one hundred? Then we go to fifty one ten, compensation guides and contracts, where we, looks like we've added cruel leave and, and for beneficiaries in event of death. So, they would, their retirements would be compensated to their state. And move on to several things on employment of retiree, of retirees. Seems like in the finding qualified, qualified employees, and when you, you have teachers that retire, and looks like it's opening up, giving you a little bit more latitude on how you can address those.
Yes, this really came out of COVID and the lack of certified teachers that we had and could find. And so, the legislature was allowed, they, they made some changes, and the state board made some changes, and so that we could rehire some of the folks who had recently retired, at least on like hundred to twenty day contracts. That was being abused a little bit, from what I understand, and some, some districts were pre-arranging situations where people would go ahead and retire early, and then they were coming right back and jumping right back in, taking their, that's not what it was intended to do, is really just to find hard, when you had hard to staff positions, you, in a, in a pinch, you could bring some people back. So, the comptoir's office is really kind of crunched down on this. I know our HR department's spoken about this a few times. So, this is just putting into clear language that there needs to be a true, clear separation for these employees, and then if you get in a position where you need to bring somebody back, you can.
Questions on fifty one nineteen? Okay, then we have an update in fifty three oh five to our family and medical leave policy, specifically regarding maternity and paternity leave. Questions on that? Okay, if not, move down, have update to fifty five hundred, or discrimination, harassment of employees based on sexual, racial, ethnic, or religious reasons. Any, any questions or comments on that policy?
Don't have anything highlighted there. I'd have to go back and reference that.
While you're looking at that, looking at that, we'll circle on to the next one. Fifty seven oh one, have a certification regarding our certification substitute teachers. Extending the substituting for regular teachers, been absent for, for thirty days, that was twenty day consecutive days. So, the, talks about teachers that'll be substituting for that, that length of, or teachers will be out for that length of time. Extending that out where it would require a certified teacher to cover, cover that, them in that absence. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman?
All right, any other questions on, on that? Fifty seven ten. All right, then next we'll go to sixty two hundred. This is attendance for students. At the bottom, talks about time released courses, students participating in that. Just making sure have a background checks and those things for, for those that are, would be participating. And the instructors that would be participating, providing those, those courses that would fall in suit with our hiring, our policy for teachers in the district. Any questions on sixty two hundred? Okay, then next is sixty three oh three. Questioning students and searches, their language that was added to this policy regarding searches by school principal and outlines procedures and, and steps that, conditions that would apply for a principal to initiate a search. Any questions on policy sixty three oh three?
Just one quick question. If a principal is not on campus at the time that a search is needed, does it assume that his or her designee would have that authority?
I, I mean, I would, it's hard to assume anything in that situation. I, they would have that. I would think that their designated would then contact me. And that's usually the protocol, is that if they would contact this office, and then one of us would go and stand in in those situations. So, rather than put, in some cases, it could be a classroom teacher at an elementary school, rather than put them in that legal situation. So, that's usually the protocol, when they'll put someone in that regard, and that designated in place. If something rises to that level, they would involve this office.
Okay, any other questions, comments on sixty three oh four? I'm sorry, sixty three oh three. Next we'll go to sixty three oh four. That's discrimination, harassment, bullying, cyberbullying, and intimidation. There is a response and, and prevention language inserted into that policy. Again, giving principal or designee guidance on, on, on how to, for response, and also prevention. Okay, nothing on that. We'll move on to sixty three twelve. Use wireless communication devices, updated language there to, so that devices are turned off and stored during instructional time. So, that makes us compliant with state law and enhances our, our wireless device policy. Any questions on sixty three?
Do you know, Mr. D, what, what our plans are? I know we don't, we didn't do a, we didn't do a policy to take the phones away, or to turn them off, or, or put them in lock bags like other districts are doing. But do all of our teachers and all of our administrators in the middle and high school have a good plan on? And I know we've used that in the past, but what, what are their, do you know their plan? Or what's their, what's their outcome for that?
So, what we had in place last year really meets the letter of this law. We've not taken the step, as you said, to remove the phones from their, from their possession. What is going to be imperative, but I've told principals, is that we explicitly explain to our students and families that this is a state law. This is not just a strong suggestion from white county schools. And so, there's not any wiggle room. I, I have seen the plan. They've just worked on it this week from the high school. All the school level plans will be in their handbooks, will be distributed to the families on their policies. So, they're not allowed to be, to my understanding, they're not allowed to be on at all at the elementary level. They're allowed to have them in a backpack for emergency purposes. They're allowed to have them on their, on, it seems, very similar in six eight, where they can have them, but they don't have them out, and they don't have to use them. The high school's procedure, many of their students use them during class. So, I can see many math teachers use them as calculators and many other folks for research purposes. I know Warrior Media uses them extensively to film and video, and that's permissible. But what we've instructed our teachers to do is have a protocol for the usage in their classroom that's approved by their principal. And then if they're in violation of that, then they're subject to the punishment, you know, as, as they're set forth. I, I don't want to misspeak, but I know that, I think that the first offense at the high school is it's taken up and sent to the office. They pick it up at the end of the day. The second offense, the parent has to pick it up. Then they move into ISS and alternative school placements beyond that. So, you know, there's, there's a district in East Tennessee that, that charges about a hundred dollars, fifty dollars the first offense, and a hundred dollars the second offense. There's other districts that, you know, they take them up, they put them in those bags, and that's, that's very expensive. The bags are great, but they're expensive. So, we, we think we have a good policy in place. We, we had a good practice before. As I said before to this board, I wasn't hearing from the high school that it was such a distraction, they couldn't teach school. But I also would not tell you that they hadn't been out during instruction time and being used improperly. So, that's gonna be a challenge, because I think, I feel like our district, and especially the high school, feels like they have a handle on it, but it's not to the extent that this law will require. So, that's gonna be a learning curve, and hopefully one that we will learn quickly.
What, what about breaks, lunch? Are they allowed to have them out at that time?
Yes, this, specifically this legislation says during instruction time. So, they're allowed to have them out during breaks, when they're traveling from class to class. But when, when bells, when class is in session, they should be off unless specifically given specific task by the instructor.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments on sixty three twelve? All right, then go into sixty four eleven, that student wellness, couple of changes there. One, this deals with guidelines for fundraising for, for regarding food and beverages that, you know, that can be sold and consumed on campus during school day. So, for everybody see a smart stack snacks guideline. That's, that is, that's being added to our, our policy on this sixty four eleven. Any questions, comments?
I feel like I'm the only one asking questions or not, but just wondering on the, the forty extra minutes of, or minimum of forty minutes a day of physical activity. And I know you may have referred to this before, but where are we getting that extra forty minutes? And I, I know it's gotta come from instruction time. We can't just pull it out of the air. So, can you give me some, some ideas of where it's coming from?
Ms. Fresh can speak to this more eloquently than I, but mainly from soul studies and science. And that's problematic, because we still test on soul studies and science. Those teachers are still graded on how they, how the students perform in those classrooms, and we're taking more time. We're basically taking from core subjects in general, math, science, reading, language arts, and what did I miss? E L A. So, so it's gotta come from somewhere. There is no more time in the day. The legislature has given us way more stuff than we can do in that time. That's what we're trying to share with them. We've tried to share that message, but there's no more time. I want to say, I said it last meeting, I'll say it again, I'm all for recess. I think kids need to run and play as much as anybody, but there's no more time in the day to do it, in the school day. There's no more time for us to do. There's no more time for us to do these things that they're asking us to do. My personal opinion is when they go home at three o'clock, they can play till their heart's content, till the sun goes down. But there's no more time from eight to three to do anything else that the legislature is telling us to do. So it's kind of oxymoronic, I feel like it's talking out of both sides of their mouth. They want to have high standards and all these accountability measures, but yet they want them to go play more. And they're taking away the time that we have to teach. So it was problematic to me in the sense we had a, I think we have a really good elementary school schedule that has served us well, we've been able to absorb all of these changes that have come down the pike over the past ten years or so with this schedule. And now that schedule's pretty much been blown up, because we had to squeeze in forty more minutes of recess. I'm all for the recess, but there was no time to do it. And now what we've had to do, what was, you got me on a soapbox, but but what we had done through block scheduling and Dr. Lynn Kennedy years ago, working on this, we had condensed all of our breaks, we tried to limit transitions. Every time you leave class to go somewhere and come back, you're losing ten minutes. So now what we did was lunch and recess were slammed together, and when they went to encore their pull-out classes, art music, that sort of thing, it was slammed together. So you left once, you came back once, and you didn't lose that. Now we've had to break that up, and we're leaving and going recess, and we're coming back, and we're leaving and going to lunch, and we're coming back. And there was just no way to make that work, and every school's a little bit different, because one school's cafeteria is not as big as the other schools. You gotta time those lunch breaks out a little bit differently. So I applaud what the legislature was thinking that they were doing, but they don't understand how school works in White County. And they really made our schedules worse, they hurt academic time in our schools, and, but they won't decrease the accountability that is expected at the end of the year. Our schools will do it, our principals and our teachers and our staff, they'll rise to the occasion, they'll make it work, and they'll still perform well. But what they did hurt our ability to perform academically.
Well, I didn't mean to get you on your soapbox, and Ms. Fresh, Ms. Butcher, I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into it, and all of our principals and administrators at every level. You know, living with an educator in the house, you hear these things. And it's frustrating to know that the state government, and that, you know, they want us to, they want us to live to these high standards, but then they want to throw these other things on. So I applaud you for stepping up to the plate and making sure that our schools run seamlessly, and making sure that our kids get the best opportunity that they can have. So thank you.
Any other questions regarding sixty-six-hundred and that student records and added language in there regarding transfer students? When that information should be received? Include, including disciplinary records that may be part of that student's add to that? All right, so that's policy sixty-six-hundred. Any questions on sixty-six-hundred? Okay, so those policies, if any nonapproval of the agenda for tonight and our consent agenda, those would be included in consent agenda. So if not, there's no objections, then we'll move on. So next would be, also, let me pause, second item on this. Second reading for policy fifty-five-oh-one, fifty-one-hundred, and sixty-three-oh-four-one. Is there any questions regarding those policies that were discussed last month? Those would also be adopted on second reading tonight. If not, then we'll move on, there was maintenance report included in our packet. A lot of activities going on in, around the district. Any questions on our maintenance report? We're fortunate to have Mr. Alley here tonight, and he may be able to answer any of those if he has some. Most all projects will be completed before school starts. All right. Well, we hope so for you as well.
I guess one thing, Michelle, how did the, how did the visitors locker room in the Roy turn out? Get that microphone over if you don't care.
It's doing really well. We've done, redone the floors in there, and just doing that and fixing up the shower part back in there made a big difference. So while we were there, we went ahead and done the girls' visitors locker room as well. So it's a major improvement for where it was earlier.
It was, it was really kind of like, you don't want to give them any amenities, but you also wanted to leave them with a good impression when they left, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it needed it, needed done probably fifteen years ago.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree.
All right, anything else, Mr. Alley, you want to make a swear of?
Not that I can think of.
I want to note that this is my tenth year as Director of Schools, and the fact that that wasn't done is proof that I haven't been in the women's locker room. Just want that on record, so nobody told me, and I hadn't been in there, but when they told me, we got it fixed, so.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to budget report, Mr. Smith.
Due to the closing of the fiscal year, there is no financial report tonight.
Okay, so we will move on and start on regarding budget. Know that, just a question, as county continues to work through their budget, just for clarity, is this correct? We'll be operating on last year's budget numbers up until what point they do get their budget approved? Okay, thank you. All right, then also included in your packet was personnel report. All indications through our reports that we do have most all positions filled for, started this year, unless there's anything need to add or update us on?
No, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go back to the previous line item, agenda item, excuse me. We talked about budget. The, Mr. Markham and I were discussing before the meeting, and he is going to help me craft a whole narrative to send out. But because we're operating on last year's budget, we can't institute, any of the, initiate any of the new raises or any of the bonuses. And so, you know, if that could change, if the county commission gets something approved in a timely manner, and that's, no, I'm not disparaging them or just in any way, I just, the reality is that we have to operate on the previous numbers. So if, whatever point that gets approved, we can go back and pay those raises or pay those bonuses at that point. But just want to be clear for, to our employees, that they don't need to expect to see any of those changes until that happens. So we're going to send something out, just as a precaution, just a heads up to let everyone know that that's the case. Our hope is that they'll get something done and we'll be able to move forward, but I don't want anybody to be surprised if that's the case. So, and that's just the way that procedure works. It's nothing from the school board side or anything that we could do differently. And again, not to be disparaging towards the county commission, they're working hard to do what they need to do. But we're just all in a tough position, and that's just the reality of where we are.
Mr. Markham, when is the next full county court meeting? So not this next one, but next, okay. And there's a chance that the budget could go through then?
Yeah, but if it didn't, and it's the twenty-first, and somebody's expecting a paycheck by the end of that week, I wouldn't want to call, oh, and by the way, so I want to be, you know, honest with people up front right now, be transparent of where we are on July the tenth.
Is there any concern with the two thousand dollar bonus that it has to be paid out? Was that written in the bill that it has to be paid out by July? Or is it just to pass the resolution by June?
I don't think that, I think the money was available, it wouldn't be available to July, but I would think in this case, the comptroller rules would supersede that in the sense that until we have a budget, we couldn't pay that out. So, I mean, Chad could speak more to that than I could, but I don't think it could be paid out until July, because that's not when the funds, that's when the funds were released in this fiscal year. But Chad can speak to the rules on that.
Yes, that would be correct. So there wasn't anything in the legislation that required it by a certain time period, I don't believe. So I think we should be good in that regard. And hopefully, to Jason's point, something will pass on the twenty-first. And if that's the case, the only thing that would be affected would be the payroll on the fifteenth. And those people we can retroactively pay for their increases, so.
Any other questions, comments regarding budget? Oh, I'm sorry, we were actually on personnel. Any questions on our personnel report, we're in good shape to start the year?
All right, we have all, we have all certified positions filled right now. If we could use one more school psychologist, so if you have one at home, send them our way. But we have that posted, but we have a few more staff positions, but we have lots of good qualified people that we'll fill those with in the coming days. But we are fully staffed right now.
All right, thank you, and well done to all those that were out recruiting. And thanks to all the staff that continues to stay in their tenure with our district and doing the excellent job they're doing. All right, so that's everything regarding items in our consent agenda. Is there anything else, board members, that you want to bring up during this time? Okay, if not, we'll turn to six o'clock for our regular board meeting. Thank you. All right. If I could have your attention, I'd call the July 10th meeting of the White County Board of Education to order. If you would please rise, and Ms. Tracy Fowler will be leading us in our pledge. Thank you, Ms. Fowler, and thank you for everyone being here in attendance tonight, whether you're here in person or whether you're watching us on live stream. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting and also welcome you to the start of the 25-26 school year for the board. So, tonight's meeting, a little light on the agenda side. We've recovered our reports and policies in our work session. Those items will be considered in our consent agenda. We do have to look at our 2025-2026 calendar for the board. And then, tonight is, this being the first meeting in the month of July, we will be electing board officers. So, with that, just like to remind everyone that Tennessee Code to Annotate and Board Policy 1400 states that every meeting of the board is open to the public except where law allows for a closed session. The agenda for the board meeting is posted on the district's website at www.waicoesholes.net at least three days prior to each meeting. State statute requires that each meeting agenda include an item reserved for public comment. A sign-up sheet is made available prior to the beginning of the regular meeting. Individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign-up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comment. Board meetings are streamed with help of Warrior Media for live or recorded viewing. Links are provided on the district website. Attending and/or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent for comments and appearances to be used. So, before we consider approving tonight's agenda, is there any board member that would have a conflict of interest on the proposed agenda for tonight?
Mr. Chair, as I do each month, no conflict of interest for me tonight. But just to make it known, my wife is an educator in the system. And all the comments that I make tonight will be in the best interest of the students and for the district. So, no conflict for me.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, I also do not have a conflict tonight, but my spouse does work for the district. But the opinions and decisions are mine and made for the best of our county school systems.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
Likewise, Mr. Chairman. My wife is an employee at the high school. No conflict with the agenda tonight. And the comments that I may make are mine and mine alone.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So, Ms. Sims, if you would, just have the minutes reflect that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all indicated that the spouse is working for the district, but nothing on tonight's proposed agenda would constitute a conflict for them. So, with that being said, next time, our agenda is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there anything that we need to discuss? We can do that now? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McDonald. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion?
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of items that were covered during our work session and were agreed upon by all board members to consent to unanimous approval. That included our board meeting minutes and our work session meeting minutes from our June 12th meeting. Budget amendments and transfers, policies, second reading of the June policy recommendations from TSBA, and also second reading of policies 5500, 5100, and 63041. We had a maintenance report, budget report, and personnel report. There was no TLN report or threat assessment report given legislators were out of session as well as students were out of session for the summer. So, if no items in the consent agenda are to be pulled out and added to new business, then we will adopt the consent agenda by unanimous vote and then proceed to our next item on the agenda, which is approval of the school board's annual calendar.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment right there on the consent agenda? Just looking around the room, and all these administrators are in the room, and the folks who put their blood, sweat, and tears into this district, I don't think we thank them enough for taking time out of their days and their evenings during their summer break to be here and putting so much into just the maintenance report or the policy report or all those budget amendments. So, just so you know, thank you from me. I'm sure, I don't want to speak for the rest of this board, but I think I can. I think I can. And say, you guys are amazing. And the staff that you have, Mr. D., is top-notch. And I think we could put them up in a wrestling match against anybody across the state, and I believe we'd come out on top. So, yeah, thank you for all that you guys do.
Echo that. So, we'll continue on to the next item on agenda, and that's approval of the school board's annual agenda. Board members, you're presented with a proposed annual agenda for the 25-26 school year going from July of 2025 to June 2026. It has all the items that we need to cover that will be on the agendas for the upcoming months and upcoming meetings. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of our annual agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Fowler. Do I have a second?
You can second, too.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Reason why there's nothing in the month of January? Or is that just a downtime?
We'll be out for snow days. No, I'm just kidding.
Don't get those teachers' hopes up already. I guarantee you, they're already counting down the day of their first day off. So...
No. Just the way the agenda things fall when we're supposed to be looking at various items. There just doesn't happen to be anything in the month of January. Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is election of school board officers. Each year, we are required to elect a chairman, vice chairman, and TLN representative. And so, those positions will be served for one year and/or until a successor has been named in the event that that situation would occur. So, this time, I will open the floor for the election of nominations for chairman to serve the 25-26 school year.
I'll make a motion for Bob Young. Somebody's got to cease the nomination, so, if that's what we want to do. Yes, yes. I can't.
I move that we cease nominations and vote for Mr. Young. If you're willing to take it again. You've done a fantastic job.
I'm not sure what your...
I'm being sincere, Mr. Young.
You already told me where I rank.
Well, that has nothing to do with the school board ranking. I'm just telling you.
Yeah, no. All right. If that's the board's desire, I'll be more than happy to serve. If that's your desire.
Thank you. I vote aye.
All right. Then, with that being said, I guess Bob Young will retain the position of chairman for the next year by acclamation. I think that's how that is worded. Okay. So, next, entertain nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Jason McDonald for vice chair.
Nomination for, has been made for Mr. Jason McDonald to serve as vice chair. Any more nominations?
I make a motion that all nominations cease and we vote by acclamation.
Officer makes a motion that we cease all nominations and vote by acclamation. Any discussion on any... I guess there'd be a second on that? Second, Mr. Smith. So, Mr. McDonald?
As long as you promise to be here at every meeting, we're good. You've done really well this last year, so we're good.
All right. So, Mr. McDonald's agreed to serve as vice chair for the next calendar year. So, next, we'll be looking for a TLN, nominations for a TLN representative.
I'll make a motion that we nominate John Smith for TLN.
So, we have a nomination for John Smith to serve as TLN representative. Have any other nominations? Okay, I have a motion that all nominations cease. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McDonald. So, Mr. Smith, you will be our TLN representative by acclamation. All right. So, Ms. Sims, and thank... They're... All positions on this board are important. So, just because you're... It takes the support of everybody to make, being a chair, vice chair, TLN representative function. So, we just appreciate all of you and your support. And, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Smith, thank you for being willing to serve. So, with that, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, and that's approval of the 25-26 testing schedule. Testing schedule for upcoming calendar year is provided to you on recommendation from our administrators. Any questions on that before we consider taking action? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion for approving the 2025-2026 testing schedule. So, motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion?
Just one question. Is this typical? Is this kind of the same schedule every year unless the law changes?
It's similar. There are changes in, sometimes in the amount of screenings that we have to do and when those timings are. But it's typical. I would say it's not repetitive necessarily, but it's very close.
And in that calendar, the assessment calendar, do have a... It is designated, state mandated, what the state mandated tests are. And didn't they pass some legislation where they would not be added any more state mandated testing?
So, they're actually, they actually are going to study it. I think they passed something that said they're going to study next year, reducing the assessments. They're also looking for part of a study to, I'm helping with part of a study with TOS to help reduce the amount, or at least the frequency of the training that our teachers are having to do. And there is a full eight-hour day worth of training, if not more, depending on how many times it takes you to pass that cybersecurity test. It's tough. I'm telling you, I could work for the Pentagon right now. But it's, but they're looking at that as well because we're asking, there's no need, in some cases, for our teachers to have to take the same test over. I mean, you know, in my opinion, anyway, and I think in some legislators' opinion. So, we're going to study that to try and reduce the amount of testing that our teachers and our students are facing next year.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second for 2025-2026 testing schedule. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is fundraising requests for this calendar year. You know, we had a significant amount of those that were reviewed last month, but we do have some more that have come in. Several elementary school fundraising requests from Doyle, from Bondicraw, and I think it was their Doyle and Bondicraw. Any questions on the elementary school fundraisers?
So, looking at some of these, Mr. D., and you may be able to answer this, but some of these look to be the same fundraisers that we were in last month that we had already approved. Is there a reason for that? Or is it changes in leadership at different schools? Or how's that work?
Well, if I remember correctly, we had a lot last month, and the board wanted time to kind of look at those. So, we kind of put them on there as a first reading, if I understand. So, we had, so you had ample time to really look at those. So, you've seen all these. They're not new. They're organized a little bit differently. You know, the one that says Bondicraw, if you scroll down through there, you'll find the other schools down there labeled as well. Doyle had some that came that were separate from the original scan. So, that's why they're in there separately. And then, you'll find the ones from the middle school and a separate file for the high school. So, you know, the discussion is, we're in a better place than we were several years ago fundraising-wise, but we've got a lot of work to go. We've got to do a lot of bookkeeping. It's got to be cleaned up. Well, housekeeping, rather. We need to get on the same forms, and we need to have more, be more specific about what our needs are. We need to have dollar amounts on these instead of just, you know, we're raising funds for the program, and we need specific needs. And so, I recognize that we have a lot of room to grow here. But based on precedent, I don't see anything in these that are out of the norm. I don't see anything that we haven't done in the past that the board hasn't approved or that's been overly taxing on our community. That's always our concern. You know, we don't want kids to pay to play, but we also don't want to burden our community and our parents to have to foot that bill as well. So, we'll continue to improve there. And I acknowledge there is a lot of room to improve in this instance, but I feel confident that the fundraisers that have been proposed are within reason.
Thank you. I apologize. Board members, I didn't pick up on that. So, Mr. McDonald, thank you for looking at that. I do appreciate the fact that they've gone through and provided more updates on financial balances for the organization.
So you know, discussion is, we're, we're in a better place than we were several years ago fundraising-wise, but we've got a lot of work to go. We've got a lot, we've gotta do a lot of bookkeeping, it's gotta be cleaned up, well, housekeeping, rather. We need to get on the same forms, and we need to have more, be more specific about what our needs are. We need to have dollar amounts on these instead of just, you know, we're raising funds for the program, and we need specific needs. And so I recognize that we have a lot of room to grow here. But, but based on precedent, I don't see anything in these that are out of the norm. I don't see anything that we haven't done in the past that the board hasn't approved or that's been overly taxing on our community. That's, that's our, always our concern, you know? We don't want kids to pay to play, but we also don't wanna burden our community and our parents to have to foot that bill as well. So we'll continue to improve there, and I acknowledge there's, there is a lot of room to improve in this instance, but I feel confident that the fundraisers that have been proposed are within reason.
Thank you, I apologize, board members, I didn't, I didn't pick up, pick up on that. So, Mr. McDonald, thank you for, for looking at that. Do appreciate the fact that they've gone through and, and provided more updates on financial balances for the organization. So any questions on, any questions on our, the fundraising requests?
I'll make a motion we approve them.
Okay, so you wanna approve.
I'd like to do them, I'd like to do them all at one time if we can.
Uh, we can. Unless there's objections. We have a motion to approve all fundraiser requests as presented, have a motion to have a second? Second by Ms. Fowler, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our district update. Mr. Stromberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations again. Personnel report, as I mentioned earlier, all of our certified positions are filled at this time. Still have a few more staff positions to fill, but we have a lot of qualified applicants, and we are blessed to have a lot of people that wanna come and work in White County schools. We could still use a school psychologist, as I said, and so we have that posted, but, but we're very proud to have all of our certified positions filled at this time. We have several new teachers coming on board this year. We're excited to welcome them to White County schools and to White County schools' family. Hope that you'll get a chance to meet these educators this upcoming school year. We're excited to be bringing on these folks and to add to our talented team. Legislatively, the board had several new laws and policies before you tonight. The schools are adjusting to these new requirements, as they always do. Most notably, we've made adjustments to the elementary recess, recess schedule and the district-wide cellphone policies and procedures. Academically, as the director of schools, I could not be prouder of our teachers, staff, and students for their efforts on state TCAP assessments. It is the goal of White County schools to be above state average in every tested category and to rank in the top five of every category amongst the upper Cumberland districts. And I'm excited to report that White County schools have achieved both of those goals. In fact, regionally, we are number one in 10 of the 27 tested categories. Our school district has set itself apart in, as an academic leader, and our community can and should be proud of our public school system. So congratulations to all of our teachers, our administrators, certainly our students and staff and our families for a job well done. Safety, this district will conduct its first CERT meeting of the fiscal year with first responders on July 22nd. Supervisor Brian Haley hosts these monthly meetings, does an excellent job of coordinating the safety efforts of our district. Mr. Haley, do you have anything you wanna say about the safety right now as far as the district's concerned? No? Okay. Yeah, he does, he does a great job. Financially, the district's budget is sound, and we're prepared for the school year. If the county commissioners cannot agree on a countywide budget soon, as we said, that the schools will run on last year's numbers in the meantime, I'm confident we can maintain the same quality programming under that model, but we're, I'm also confident that our county commissioners will be able to come to a resolution very soon. Athletically, fall sports are already practicing. Many have matches as soon as school begins. Our coaches and trainer monitor the weather and heat indexes closely to ensure the safety of our athletes. And as far as building projects are concerned, crews have broken ground at Doyle, but there's been little progress to date. And our construction manager, Mr. David Vedreen, will be providing with me with an update soon. This completes my director's report, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I did have one comment, and, and I don't know whose idea it was, Ms. Griffin, it might have been yours, with the middle school putting, you know, breaking them up into teams, into, into teaching teams. I like that, and I like that concept. I also like that they're introducing the world to those new teachers that are coming in that we may not ever see, you know? We may run into them at a ballgame or, or see them working something like that. But just the fact that we're getting to meet those folks through Facebook or through whatever, their website or whatever it is, great idea to break them up. And I don't know where you came up with that, the, the armor or whatever that was, but good job. Appreciate that, that, you did a good job there. Shamelessly stolen, okay, so. Yep, yeah, so it's, it's just, so board members, if you've not been on Facebook or you've not seen any of that, go and, and look at the middle schools' teams breakout and, and their names and, and meet those new teachers. So it's, it's just, I applaud the administrators at the middle school for continuing that, that process that Ms. Griffin started, so.
All right, thank you for those comments, Mr. McDonald. Any other questions for our director regarding the district update? Okay, if not, appreciate the update and best wishes for a great, successful school year. So next, we'll go to public comment. Per policy 1404, we always reserve a spot on the agenda for public comment. No, no, no one has signed up to request to speak to the board tonight. So we'll move on to our next item, and that is new business. We do have a field trip request for White County, White County High School Beta Club to attend a convention, state convention in Nashville, November 19th through 21st. It's pretty close to when we'll be down there for, for our TSBA annual, annual meeting. But that field trip request was presented and, for, for our approval. So this time, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the White County High School Beta Club to attend the state convention in Nashville in November.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McDonald, have a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is old business, and we have no old business items, so that leads us to chairman's comments. Keep in mind that next weekend, we'll be at Gatlinburg for our Summer Law Institute. I'd like to thank the director for working hard and getting us all rooms at the hosting hotel. Makes logistics a little bit, a little bit easier. But we do have a copy of the agenda for, for you then for, for next week. Be sure to get that on your, as you leave tonight. Also, we will be having a work sessions, excuse me, board retreat while we're, while we're there. And I'm proposing that we break this into sessions, that we have a hour and a half session Friday after the legislative session is, concludes. And then we do the same shortly after conclusion on, on Saturday. Break it into one, one and a half hour time period. That way, we can, we don't have brain drain during, during that time. So we'll make, recommend that we, we do that. And if you could, just get that posted on, on our, on our website, that'll, that'll be happening. Other than that, our next board, school board meeting will be August 14th at, here at the Board of Education. We'll have our work session at 5:00 and our regular board meeting at 6:00. So that brings us to the final item on our agenda, and that's in tournaments. So I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McDonald, have a second? Second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? Wanna stay longer? Okay, all right, all in favor signify by saying aye, and motion passes. Thank you, and thank you all the staff for showing up as well.